Good evening. I'd like to call to order the March 6, 2025, meeting of the City of Nashua Planning Board. First up, Madam Secretary, could we get a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Mayor Donches, Mike Peterson, Bob Bollinger.
Here.
Adam Varley.
Here.
Maggie Harper here, Dan Hudson, Scott LaClair, Larry Hirsch.
Here.
Cameron Green.
Here.
Alderwoman Kling.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Harper. Next item on the agenda, approval of minutes from our February 20, 2025 meeting. Has any member of the board had an opportunity to review those minutes and is willing to make a motion regarding their acceptance as written or acceptance with amendments? Mr. Varley?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
All right. Motion by Mr. Varley. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Green. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? One? Okay. All right. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Communications. Scott, anything additional that we should be aware of tonight?
You should have the book and page number for 152 Temple Street. That's sealing the change easement to correspond with the plan that you'll see versus the older information that had a lot of extraneous items that were no longer in force. And I believe Mr. Durfee distributed the calculations for the affordable housing talk that will happen later today.
He certainly did. Thank you. Thank you, Scott. All right. Next item on the agenda, reported chair, committee, and liaison. I don't have anything, but Ms. Harper?
Yes, I attended the Historical District Commission February 24. We had one case for the Whiting Building at 33 Main Street, which was for assigned approval for Big Brothers and Big Sisters, which passed.
Very good. Thank you for the update. All right. Before we get to our regular cases, I do want to read the planning board procedure. The procedure of the meeting is as follows. After the legal notice of each conditional, special use permit, site plan, or subdivision plan is read by the chair, the board will determine if the application is complete and ready for the board to take jurisdiction, the public hearing will begin, at which time the applicant or representative will be given time to present an overview and description of their project. The applicant shall speak to whether or not they agree with recommended staff stipulations. The board will then have an opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or staff. The chair will then ask for testimony from the audience. First, anyone wishing to speak in opposition or with concern to the plan may speak. Please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. This will be the time to ask questions you may have regarding the plan. Next, testimony will come from anyone wishing to speak in favor of the plan. The applicant will then be allowed a rebuttal period, at which time they shall speak to any issues or concerns raised by prior public testimony. After this is completed, the public hearing will end, and the board will resume the public meeting, at which time the board will deliberate and vote on the application before us. The board asks that both sides keep their remarks to the subject at hand and try not to repeat what has already been said. Above all, the board wants to be fair to everyone and make the best possible decision based on the testimony presented and all applicable approval criteria established in Nashua revised ordinances. Thank you for your interest and courteous attention, and at this time, if you could please turn off or silence your cell phones, it would be greatly appreciated. All right, moving along. Under old business site plans, we have none. Under new business site plan, we have case 824-0238. That was tabled till this evening from our February 20 meeting. Is any member of the board willing to make a motion regarding removing this item from the table? Ms. Harper?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to remove case 824-0238 from the table.
All right. Thank you. Motion by Ms. Harper. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Removed from the table. Is there a representative from the applicant here? I believe if you want to refresh our memory where we left off, but I think there was really one primary sticking point here. So please just introduce yourself and feel free to elaborate on that point.
Michael Malinowski with Allen &amp; Major Associates. The one item that we had discussed at our last meeting was the presence of several cross easements that were on the property that had showed up on the original existing conditions plan. There were several cross ones that went east-west, and there was a couple that went north to south. There had actually been an abutter from 31 Bridge Street that had voiced that opinion that there is an existing 12-foot wide easement that falls on the north side of the property. And if you see the updated plans, we've highlighted that in red just to make sure that everybody can see that. The remaining easements on the property were relinquished and by recorded deed when the property was sold. The one remaining, the 12-foot wide easement that is shown in red there, remains in place. What Mr. -- what Scott had provided to you this evening was the recorded amendment to that agreement that was signed by the abutter and the property owner. It remains the 12-foot wide easement along the north piece. There's a small sliver that is discontinued, which is highlighted on the plan. That's within the parking field of the project. The only change that we had to the plans were we added a fence just outside of that easement to segregate our project from the easement area and to show on the existing -- on the site preparation plan that that area is to remain paved. Currently, it's paved now, and the abutter uses it for access out to Union Street.
All right. I guess I'll just ask a follow-up to that. Do you believe that as presented on the plan and with the documentation provided, that any remaining issues with respect to at least your driveway access or potential impacts to your parking, that's been resolved?
Yes. It didn't change any of the parking configuration or the access that we had on the property.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Questions from the board? All right. Thank you for your testimony this evening. At this point, I would like to open it up to the public. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak in opposition or with concern to this application? Seeing none. Any member of the public that wishes to speak in favor of this application? All right. Seeing none. Throw it back to the board one more time. Any last questions of the applicant's representative? All right. Seeing none. At this point, I am going to close the public hearing. Thank you again for your testimony.
Thank you.
And we'll enter into our public meeting. For me, the biggest thing was the easement issue. I'm glad we decided to not have that hashed out at the last meeting. It seems like the applicant has done their due diligence with respect to researching that and appropriately documenting it. I thought favorably of the plan before, but I thought that was a necessary cleanup item. But obviously, I'd like to hear from other members of the board as well on that. So any strong thoughts one way or the other? Or do you think they've adequately addressed the matter we asked them to address? Ms. Harper, please.
I'm in complete agreement with you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. If there's no other discussion item among the board, I think we might be looking at the point where there -- do you just want to remind the board there was one waiver request? Again, kind of one of the standard ones we see with respect to depicting existing conditions. So I think if a board member were willing to make a motion regarding this project, we would want to start with a vote on the waiver request. Is any member of the board willing to make a motion at this time, starting with the waiver request? Mr. Varley?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I would make a motion first as to case 824-0238 with respect to the waiver request being a request to waive the requirement in Section 190-279 EE to depict existing conditions. And that would be motion to grant the waiver with the finding that strict conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship and that because of the specific circumstances, the waiver will still allow for carrying out the spirit and intent of the regulations.
All right. Thank you. Motion by Mr. Varley. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Green. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstaining.
One abstention. Mr. Hirsch.
All right.
Motion passes. Mr. Varley, would you be interested in continuing the thought with respect to a motion on the site plan approval?
I would be happy to do that. So again, as to case 824-0238, I would make a motion as to the final site plan approval. To grant such final site plan approval, finding that the application meets the requirements outlined in Section 190-146D, and also that the plan satisfies the mixed-use overlay criteria in Section 190-23E1, and that is subject to the subsequent conditions that are identified in the staff report A through K.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Varley. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Hirsch, do you wish to abstain again?
Certainly. Just wondering if -- he should be seconding the motion if he's abstaining.
All right. Can we retract our prior vote? Larry, you had to throw a wrench in the -- Sam, procedurally?
If you're abstaining, Mr. Hirsch, I would recommend not seconding the motion.
All right. Do we need to rescind our prior vote? Because we have an affirmative vote for approval.
Keep the vote, but ask for a different second.
Yeah, I will reiterate my original motion with request that a non-abstaining member second that motion.
Now I will second the motion.
Motion by Mr. Varley reworded as stated, with a new second by Mr. Green. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Hirsch, do you wish to abstain?
No.
With one abstention, motion passes. All right. Thank you. All right. Moving along. Next item on the agenda, case 825-0011 under new business site plan, property located at 169 Daniel Webster Highway. Has any member of the board had an opportunity to review that application and is willing to make a motion regarding board acceptance this evening? Ms. Harper?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion regarding new business case 825-0010 that we may take jurisdiction.
All right. Thank you. Motion by Ms. Harper. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Varley. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Motion passes. Board has taken jurisdiction. Is there a representative on behalf of the applicant here this evening?
Certainly.
Come right up. If you need to adjust the microphone, they are recording, so just make sure they can get you. And just introduce yourself, name and address for the record, and just tell us a little bit about the application.
My name is Mary Bruges-Nalet. I am from 169 Daniel Webster Highway. I'm the, along with my husband, the owner of Game Day Men's Health Nashua. We are requesting approval for a conditional use permit. This is my first time doing this, so can you just tell me what you need now?
Did you want to perhaps give us a brief overview of the business?
Sure.
Hours of operation?
Sure.
And if we think anything else, we'll be sure to ask.
Okay.
Go right ahead, okay?
So we're a men's health clinic. We operate Monday through Friday. We're starting just three days a week. We are by appointment only. We see typically men for hormone therapy, weight management, vitamin therapy, et cetera. We have a medical director who's a DO. We have a -- and is our overseer of the clinic. We have our physician assistant, who's our clinic director. We have a medical assistant, and we have a general manager that will be operating the day-to-day work.
All right. Looks like you're seeking one waiver request. I don't know if you wanted to speak to it directly. I can tell you it's a pretty common one that we see, but if you did just want to state for the record that you are in fact seeking a waiver request with respect to depicting existing conditions?
No, actually, that's not on there this time.
Did I?
Well, she needs to do.
Unless I'm reading the wrong report.
You know, I think it's because, yeah, the two copies of the Led Street.
I'm fixing that right up.
Okay. My apologies.
I just, yeah.
No, thank you. Thank you, Adam. All right. So.
So if she could just go through the criteria.
If you could coach me a little bit on this one, Scott, I'm just.
Yeah. Actually, I don't know if you can even read the screen, but when I emailed the person.
I printed it. Yeah, I printed that. Sure. So for authorized use, the clinic is specifically authorized as a conditional use under the use metrics S19015, Table 15-1 for the zoning district. For compliance with requirements, our clinic's operations will fully comply with all applicable requirements outlined in this article and specific conditions established for medical or health-related facilities under the zoning code. For public health and safety, the clinic will not endanger public health or safety. The clinic will enhance public health by providing specialized care focused on men's hormonal health, including treatments for testosterone replacement, weight management, and other essential wellness services. All procedures will follow strict medical guidelines, ensuring patient safety and contributing positively to the overall health of the community. Impact on abutting properties, the proposed clinic will not devalue abutting properties. It is a professional medical establishment that maintains a clean, professional, and welcoming environment consistent with the area's character. The adjacent property is a current hospital facility. Neighborhood compatibility, the clinic will blend seamlessly into the neighborhood as it is a low-impact professional health service that aligns with the nearby commercial uses. No disruptive activities or excessive noise are associated with the business. Highway and pedestrian safety, the clinic will not adversely affect highway or pedestrian safety. The site provides adequate parking, clear pedestrian pathways, and manageable traffic flow for patients and staff. Environmental impact, the clinic's operations will not adversely impact the natural or environmental resources of the city. The use is contained entirely within the existing building. No hazardous materials will be used or disposed of improperly. Public utilities and services, adequate public utilities and community facilities are available at the site to support the clinic's operations without necessitating excessive public expenditures. The clinic's needs for utilities, including water and electricity, are modest and align with current property capabilities. On-street parking, well, there is no on-street parking. We do have a parking lot, and we are by appointment only, so there's ample parking for our patients.
Thank you for walking through the CUP criteria. Sorry for the administrative snafu, but I think we're all on the same page now, so thank you.
I think what happened is it looks like you've got pasted into the Led Street project, so it's -- that doesn't belong there. That goes.
Yeah, we've got it now.
Yeah, I got it.
The correct ones, isn't it? Yeah. I think we're squared away, but thank you. Thank you, Scott. Thank you for your testimony. Questions from the board for the applicant? Just one quick one for me. It's my understanding, is this correct, you're occupying like one suite or a small portion of the overall 169 property, so?
Correct. It's like the back half of the Remax building.
Okay. All right. Other questions from the board at this time? All right. Thank you. Seeing none, I will open it up to the public. Is anyone here to speak? And no? Attorney Prohlman's shaking his head. Is anyone else here to speak in opposition or with concern to this application? No? Anyone here to speak in favor of this application? All right. Seeing none. I will close the public hearing at this time unless -- any last-minute thoughts from the board for the applicant? All right. All righty. So we'll close the public hearing, enter our public meeting. This one seems pretty straightforward to me. Low impact. I think they've satisfied the CUP conditions. Would love to hear any additional thoughts from the board? No? No? All right. Well, in that case, would any member of the board be willing to make a motion? Mr. Varley, please.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to approve new business 825-0005 for a conditional use permit, finding that it does meet the requirements in Section 190-133F and without any subsequent conditions.
All right. Thank you. Motion by Mr. Varley. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Green. For clarification, Mr. Green, will you be abstaining on the final?
I will not be abstaining.
You will not? Okay. Second by Mr. Green. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. You're all done. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Moving along. Next item on the agenda, case 825-0009, property located on Led Street, Sheet 87, Lot 225. Has any member of the board had an opportunity to review this application and is willing to make a motion regarding board accepting jurisdiction? Ms. Harper?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to accept jurisdiction on new business 825-0009.
All right. Thank you. Motion by Ms. Harper. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Green. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Board has jurisdiction. Jim, come right up. Just introduce yourself, please, if you would.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. My name is Jim Potropolis. I am a professional engineer at Heiner Swanson, Inc., doing business at 3 Congress Street in Nashua, New Hampshire. Tonight, representing Led Street Development LLC, Mr. Jeff Lynch is with us this evening, and Andy Prohlman is with us as well. Mr. Hirsch, Andy indicated to me that you did nothing wrong in that case, so can second a motion even though you abstained from the vote.
Thank you.
I called my lawyer right away, and he said, no, you can do that, so.
Hey, you can't be too careful. Belt and suspenders.
Anyway, we're seeking a site plan approval this evening for property on Led Street. What I'd like to do is go through the facts of our site plan and then answer any questions the board may have. I'm going to start with the aerial. You know, this is an undeveloped piece of property. It now has an address of 194 Simon Led Street, and it's located at the west end of Simon Street. You know, Simon Street runs from the highway almost to downtown. This is over near the Simon Street intersection. This particular property measures 2.86 acres in size in the zone PI Park Industrial. And as you can see on the aerial, where the property itself is located by Led Street to the north, vacant parcel directly to the west that's owned by Mr. Lynch, as well as Brons Craft Industrial Building behind us. And then to the east, although still in the park industrial zone, are two, I believe, senior residential multifamily buildings that exist there by variance. Overall, the neighborhood, by and large, this end of Led Street contains a number of commercial and industrial uses. A little bit of background on this property. It's remained vacant over the years primarily because the property was used as an asbestos dump site many years ago. Our client has an option to purchase the property, and he's recently received an approval from the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services to cap this property by placing two feet of material on the site. That cap does not -- that cap does enable us for the adaptive reuse. And if you look at the photo, actually, if you go back, Scott, thank you, the area in the center of the site, that brown area, that was the area of the asbestos location. So it didn't occupy the entire property. The outer edges of it, you know, remained in its natural state, but the inside of it was used to dispose of asbestos. You may know Mr. Lynch owns and operates both a landscaping company and a siteware company here in Nashua. He previously operated a similar type use that we're going to talk about in a minute over on Main Dunstable Road, but that site was recently leased to a Herc Equipment Rental Company. You know, if you were to go to the site, the topography is somewhat unique. That brown area is actually a deep ravine. I suspect many years ago, there was either an excavation or a natural depression here in which the asbestos was brought in to fill it. There is higher ground on all three sides. The non-asbestos areas are very -- are fairly flat, and the site right now is currently fenced in on all four locations, four sides. Scott, if you don't mind, go into the site plan. So what's being proposed is to fill the ravine with good material and then cap it in accordance with the DES requirements with clean granular material and reclaimed asphalt. The site can then be reused as a quote-unquote contractor's yard, which is allowed use in the PI zone. And I'll describe a little bit about what -- how Mr. Lynch intends to use that property. Couple elements of the site plan. We've got a single paved curb cut off of Led Street. In that location, Led Street has a rather abrupt high point to it, and we're sit at our location pretty much at the high point to maximize site distance, looking in both directions. On the east -- excuse me, on the east side of the site will be material storage bins, concrete blocks that, you know, materials such as sand, stone, crushed gravel will be located there. Several of those may have canopy roofs to prevent dust. We've also identified areas of the site where the business may stockpile earth materials, it may process earth materials. It will also have equipment staged and stored on this property. New fencing is proposed along Led Street. All fencing on all four sides will be slatted. The chaining fence will be slatted to provide a little bit of buffer protection. The plan does represent added landscaping on the Led Street side as well as the east side facing the residential property. Lastly, a grass swale in the back property will be proposed to construct, to handle, accommodate stormwater. So a couple other items to mention. The site will not be open for retail use. This is solely for Mr. Lynch's business. It will not be a snow deposit lot. He won't import snow and stockpile it there. That's not big enough really to do that. The hours of operation indicate 24/7, but we've done that only because of the nature of Mr. Lynch's business. In winters, there are snowstorms. He may need to occupy the site to pick up some select materials. He may have a water main break in the middle of the night where he needs to get there and get some sand bedding or some other materials. By and large, this will be a Monday through Saturday operation, normal business hours. Mr. Chairman, we did supply a traffic impact report worksheet. It's proposed the use to add possibly 100 weekday trips, 50 in, 50 out. It's proposed the use to add possibly 100 weekday trips, 50 in, 50 out during the AM peak, 10 trips during the PM peak, 20 trips. So by and large, it's not a heavy traffic generator. We have asked for a waiver of Section 19279, survey of adjacent parcels within 1,000 feet of the site. The letter provides you with the reasons for that, why it is a hardship, and how our plan meets the spirit and intent. I won't go into that right now. If approved, Mr. Lynch expects to start in, in the spring and complete the work. It'd take a couple months to get the site all prepped and ready to go. With that, in summary, we believe the application conforms to the National Land Use Code. The conditions of approval is outlined in Scott's report, as well as the outstanding engineering comments which we just received are, in my opinion, addressable and agreeable to our client. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from the board at this time? Jim, I did have one, just with respect to the driveway. It looks like 60-foot right-of-way from some prior documentation. I'm just having a hard time scaling it here. Are you able to comment on actually how wide that throat width is? And did you intend to use the whole 60 feet or?
Yeah, one of the, one of the comments we had is at the right-of-way line, you have to be 36 feet or less. My plan's actually 38. I cheated a little bit. Scott's keen eye caught it. I've got to pull that in a little bit. But there's a nice widened shoulder on that section of Led Street. So I don't, Mr. Lynch doesn't expect a lot of semis in and out of this site, but you know, dump trucks and things like that are big vehicles. We've got a nice turning radius there. So, you know, 30, you know, if the throat being paved is 28 feet, by the time it widens at the right-of-way, we'll be compliant at 36 feet.
Okay. So you're comfortable addressing the engineering comment where you just pinch it, pinch that throat a tad?
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Other questions from the board at this time? All right. I think Mr. Prohman, Mr. Lynch, I imagine you're, you're just here for this application. All right. So I think we can dispense with that part. Last chance for the board? Did you say, is somebody on Zoom? Oh, is?
Nobody on Zoom.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Thank you for checking. All right. I think, Jim, I think we're okay at this point?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Generally speaking, I don't have any real concerns here. I'm familiar with the prior operation on Main Dunstable Road. I think for what this is, especially as a non-retail location, it seems like, it seems like a pretty, pretty benign use. In terms of traffic, it's not the volume that I would be concerned about, obviously. Just with the type of business, you are going to see some heavier vehicles. But if anyone is familiar with that area of ledge and Simon, there's already UPS trucks out there. Like, I don't think it would be atypical of the type of vehicle mix that, that you see out there, just in terms of, I guess, non-passenger vehicles. So my, that's sort of my, my general thoughts, but I obviously love to hear from the board if you have additional input on this one. Mr. Varley, please.
Mr. Chair, I guess I would just basically second your observations and views here. I mean, I think this is a, this is a pretty good fit location. You know, frankly, it's probably, it's probably a better, better site than the Main Dunstable one. So, you know, I think it's a very reasonable use of, of this property and, and, you know, glad they were able to, you know, get the DES authority to cap it. It seems like a good, good opportunity to reuse what would otherwise be, you know, an unusable property, so.
Agreed. Thank you. Other members of the board? Quiet group tonight, so that's okay, though.
I do want to say a quick thing. It does look like there's a similar storage yard on the other side of that, too. Like I said, it's a great, I think, a very similar use right next to each other, so makes a lot of sense.
I, I would agree. I think kind of with, with a lot of the eclectic land uses you have in that area, to Mr. Varley's point, this seems to fit in with, with kind of those, those other things, so. But, thank you, Mr. Green. But if there's, there's no other thoughts or comments from the board, anyone willing to make a motion on this application? I would remind the board of the one waiver request, which we should take action on first, if anyone was willing to make that motion. Mr. Varley? I inferred your twitch as a volunteer.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I would start by making a motion with respect to new business A25-0009, site plan, to grant the requested waiver from Section 190-279EE regarding showing of existing conditions on the plan, and that would be with the finding that strict conformity would pose it an unnecessary hardship and that the specific circumstances or conditions would allow for carrying out the spirit of the intent of the regulations while granting a waiver.
All right. Thank you. Motion by Mr. Varley. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Green. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Varley, would you be inclined to continue?
Sure. So again, with respect to new business A25-0009, site plan, I would make a motion to grant final site plan approval, finding that the application does meet the requirements outlined in Section 190-146D with the subsequent conditions listed in the staff report, A through G.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Varley. Pardon me. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Green. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Have a good night, guys. All right. Next item on the agenda, review of tentative agenda to determine developments of regional impact. Has any member of the board had an opportunity to review the tech review meeting notes from March 3rd and was willing to make a motion with respect to potential projects of regional impact? Ms. Harper?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that there are no regional, I mean, tentative business proposals with regional impact.
Thank you. Motion by Ms. Harper. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Varley. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Yeah. We'll get there when we get there. All right. Next item on the agenda, under other business, the moment we've all been waiting for. Sam can discuss his arithmetic skills, but I'm sorry, I joke, I joke because I care. But Sam, at the, at the last meeting, did give us an opportunity. He gave us a couple of weeks to think about additional comments. He had time to stew on some, some comments in between. So I guess, I guess at this point, Sam, you're, you're welcome to kind of reestablish, reintroduce us. And obviously, members of the board, if you have any additional thoughts that you've had over the intervening couple of weeks, feel, feel free to, to sound off tonight and let Sam know, because it seems like we're, we're getting pretty, pretty close on this, Sam. Is that a true statement? And so?
Yes. Yeah, and I would say that we were, we were pretty close this time last year as well. But I think we just wanted to kind of take a sec, pause, come back and kind of reflect on these a little bit further. And, and we had done that, and we, we do need to bring these back again, as we had talked about at the last meeting. There is a development that is underway, and they are about to get into the construction of the affordable units as part of the development. And these standards are integral in making that development compliant with the intent of, of the inclusionary zoning ordinance. And as you can see through this document, it's pretty robust and comprehensive. It covers a lot of elements of not only how the units are built and designed, but bedroom counts relative to affordability as a percent of total bedrooms in the development, project phasing, right of first refusal, the marketing of units. There's, there's a lot here. And we're fortunate that there is a development underway that will be utilizing these, as it's going to be, I hate to use the word guinea pig, but it's going to be very helpful for us to see how the process plays out with the development, and that being a development of detached, single-family homes. So I think it's really an excellent case study, if you will. And I'd be happy to speak on any of the broader topics before jumping into just a little overview of the work we did to add some supplemental information that will eventually be integrated into this document relative to how the maximum sale price is calculated. So if anyone has any other topics they'd like to cover before we get into that, I'm all ears.
Guys, okay.
I just have one question. Could you just remind me what the transfer of ownership looks like?
In terms of how the property is conveyed?
Right. To a new owner, like?
Yeah. So for one, when, are you saying the first buyer of, of the new construction?
No. Transfers it to another person.
I see. And the affordability is maintained?
Okay.
Yes. Let me remind myself as I.
I know we talked about it, but I can't remember exactly.
Generally speaking, I mean, the affordability, there is a deed restriction in place. So there is going to be that cap, and then, actually, it is, right, it's part of the maximum allowable sale price section. So that would be, I want to say, fourth page for subsequent sales. So it's based on, again, the same calculation of determining what the, the prospective buyer's 30% of income housing allocation, like what, that 30% of money they can spend on housing. That calculation needs to occur just as the original buyer, that same calculation occurs. And then, it's basically the same process. It's really the same calculation as in determining what that maximum sale price is. The sale price will move up or down with how the area meeting income index moves, up or down, as that is really the benchmark. But that's also then impacted by interest rates, all of the other non-mortgage related fees that go into that. So that is taxes, possible mortgage insurance. All of those do have an impact on that, that maximum sale price for any subsequent sales, but also the AMI is, is a major driver behind that, as that is their, their buying capacity.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you. Good clarification to hear that again, because that could, that could easily get lost, so thank you. Other questions from the board? All right. Seeing, seeing none at this time. Sam, if you wanted to walk us through any, any specifics you had, please.
Yeah, so, so you do have a document that gets into, both Bob and Adam had asked me to kind of develop a formula rather than just working off the text, because when you do read the text, you kind of spin your wheels a little bit of like, how do we actually come to this final number? So we wanted to put it out in formula form and then kind of run through, you know, executing that equation to get to that final sale price. And we do also have a, actually, Connor, would you mind opening up that Excel workbook down on the bottom? Yeah, it's not on the agenda. We developed this today where we can actually play with some numbers, and you can see how that bottom line, maximum allowable, allowable purchase price will change. But generally, the first step is to determine what the monthly income available for housing expenses is. So you take that AMI number, and that AMI number is dependent on, number one, how many people will be in the household. Is it a, is it a four-person household? And then, is it the 80% AMI threshold, or is it the 100% AMI threshold? And those two numbers kind of play off each other. And then you multiply that by 30%, that's your 30% of income, divide that by 12 months, and that is your monthly available income. And then determining the mortgage payment, or sorry, these are, yes. You're, you're taking away the non-mortgage related. So you take, oh, you're, sorry. No, I, I just wrote this today. You think that I would have it fresh in my memory?
You're doing great.
Thank you. Thank you. It's very complicated, as you can see. But basically, we do have to come up with, you know, take away from that monthly allowable income, what are all of the non-mortgage payment fees? So that is all of your real estate taxes, mortgage insurance, HOA fees, and then any utility costs. Again, these are costs that are not going towards the mortgage payment. We need to be able to determine what is the maximum capacity for mortgage payment. So then we come away with a number, and that helps us to calculate what is the total available loan value that a prospective buyer can afford. So that loan value is, what is, what is the maximum allowable mortgage payment? And then calculate it out over, you know, some various mortgage rate factors. So that's interest rate, length of mortgage, so on and so forth. That would be on, that, how that plays out would be on page four of, of the document before you, the mortgage loan formula. And then that gives us the, the loan amount, the maximum loan amount number. And then, given there's an expectation that the maximum allowable down payment would be 5%, you're able to basically add 5% to, to that loan amount to give you the maximum purchase price. And so on the, on the screen, that's kind of itemized in order through which this equation would run. And if you'd like, we can play with any of these numbers, and you can see how that affects purchase price. There are quite a few assumptions here, because we just need to put some numbers in. Major variability in what the building will actually be assessed for, because that plays into property taxes, and therefore your, how much of your disposable income is, is then allocated towards property taxes. There may not even be an HOA, so you may not have HOA fees, or you may have much higher HOA fees. Utility costs, those are variable, year to year, but also building type to building type. So we had to make a number of assumptions just for the sake of putting in some numbers. I'm hoping that they're relatively realistic. But again, a lot of assumptions, really just for the purposes of demonstrating how the formula works in, in coming up with our maximum allowable sale price.
And Sam, to, to your point, there's always going to be some degree of variability. The interest rates today are not the interest rates that I had when I purchased a home, so I, I think there's, I think a reasonable person would have to expect some reasonable allowance for the fact that you're not going to be able to nail every single figure on here to 10 significant digits. But I, I think as long as there's a basic framework, and everybody's working within that same framework, you're, you're getting an order of magnitude at least, which I, I, that's what I would glean as the most important part of this. There's, there's at least an established sort of process or algorithm, if you want to call it that, where everybody can look at the same thing and replicate it and get the same answer, so.
I appreciate that sentiment. I do think that one of the things that we're going to get a better understanding of as this plays out with this particular development, for anyone who's ever bought a house, there is that, you know, maybe month period where you're getting pre-approvals, and you're going to see houses, and especially in a really hot market, you're, it's, it's very stressful. There's a lot going on very quickly, and you have to act fast. There's a lot of information that needs to be generated out of that process and then plugged into this spreadsheet. And some of those, when you look at the numbers that we're looking for, this is essentially setting what the sale price is, but we don't know necessarily, you know, if you're going as an affordable buyer to a lender, well, how much is the house that you want to buy? Well, I'm not sure. well, how much is the house that you want to buy? Well, I'm not sure. How much can you lend me? You, you see that relationship where there's, we're going to have to figure out how that actually plays out. But I think that you'll see two numbers that I think are really key, where the assessed home value on line seven is, we're, the assumption is that just we're, we're playing with around numbers here, a four hundred thousand dollar home, but then that allows a maximum allowable sale price of, you know, two hundred and fourteen thousand. That's great from a lender's perspective, as, as they're lending far less than the value of the home. If those two numbers were reversed, we'd have a real problem. But, you know, it's these things that, with some basic understanding of how lenders may be looking at this, I think that we will be okay, but I think there's also going to be some legwork that we do with the developer as he's working through the sale of these units, but also possibly having conversations with lenders, because as you read these standards, the city's very involved with the administration of this. It's likely we will end up developing relationships with local lenders who are working with these affordable buyers, so that we can help expedite these processes. Again, that home buying process can be short, but also long and stressful.
Sam, to that, to that point, is there, is there precedent? Have, have you looked at other models for other municipalities that have done that? And is that sort of part and parcel of, of this, where the city has a vested interest in seeing the execution of their plan? And they sort of, I don't want to say they take on the middleman, and I certainly don't want to sign them real estate broker titles, but there is some handshake type of thing, or some sort of informal or formal referral type of system? Is that correct?
I can't really speak to that, to be honest. Matt Sullivan may be better equipped to speak to where some of this was pulled from. In my experience, I, I haven't been thoroughly involved or, or worked with or observed regulations that other cities have adopted, in New Hampshire specifically, because I think that's important to note, you know, around the state enabling legislation and how municipalities can approach affordable housing, especially when dealing with, with ownership-style housing. So, so I can't speak to this as, as being pulled from other models within New Hampshire. So, not a great answer, but-
Yeah, and I guess, I'm sorry, Maggie, just a quick, quick follow-up to that. Because I, I don't want to overstate it or make it seem like more than it is, but it, it seems like in a lot of instances, city staff are often wearing multiple hats as, as it is, and if you had to be go-between, between borrower and lender as well, like I, I don't, that, that part, I guess I'm not quite understanding, but-
We have, Matt and I have, have talked about this where, right, this, this would be a, if this really takes off, and say, with the new code, there's a lot more incentives around building affordables, and, and we, we stress this a little bit, and we dial it in, and it becomes effective. And we start seeing hundreds of units a year that are being developed at, using these standards. The legwork associated with that for confirming and checking and making sure everything's in compliance and, you know, being that go-between, between the developer, the buyer, and the lender, and playing the city's role in this process, is significant. That, that is not a light amount of work. We've had conversations about potentially hiring a, a staff person who, who is very familiar with, with finance, real estate finance and, and some planning and, and other things, as that would, but again, it depends on what the demand is and how well this performs. But we recognize that if it does take off, there would be a lot of work associated with it. But, good work.
Understood. Sorry, Maggie.
I don't know.
Go, go right ahead.
I'm just wrapping, you know, like wrapping my head around all of it. It, it sounds wonderful. As far as the people, you know, trying to purchase the property, is, is there gonna, is there a waitlist? Because I would think an opportunity like this would be, a lot of people would want to take advantage of it. So would, is there, would there be a waitlist and it would be offered in that manner, or is it competitive?
That's a really good question. And I think a formal, maybe city even managed, or at least, you know, say we are the, the gatekeepers of the waitlist, where people can come to the city, submit their names, get pre-approved to be on that. I think that would be a great tool to offer. We're not there yet, simply because I don't think that with only one development, we haven't seen it. We have gotten people's interest saying, hey, I know that this development's going in. How do I get one? We, we don't have an answer quite yet. So again, navigating that relationship between developer, buyer, and the city is something we'll have to flesh out.
Okay, thank you.
Sam, I just had a, and I think this kind of relates to the discussion we're probably going to have, but, you know, and I, I, Bob, this is, this is fantastic. I think this is really good and will be really helpful for, for people saying, okay, I'm, I'm going to try to sort of, you know, estimate this process. In terms of, like, taking for example, the, housing-related expenses that we're deducting from the monthly proceeds that are available for the mortgage. I'm assuming the expectation is that when, when you're doing this for a specific development, that you're using, the expectation is that the developer has to use more precise, like, real-time figures. Like, I'm just thinking about the HOA, for example. Like, if, if we were to say, we're just going to establish, like, a peg HOA fee, you know, the developer could in theory say, well, I'm going to charge HOA fee that's twice that now, and then you're not really reflecting that accurately. So, is that sort of the idea, is when you get to the stage, and I know we've got, you said, just, we've got just the one development now, but is that sort of the expectation, is that when we get into the nuts and bolts, we're going to be talking about sort of real-time or closer to real-time figures for, for these things?
Yeah, and, and you'll see, right after the section in the standards about determining the maximum allowable sale price, we get into the condominium and HOA fees. You know, there's a requirement that they submit their condo docs to the city for review. And, you know, if this really takes off, that new staff person would have a keen eye towards, you know, what is the structure of their condominium association? What are the reserves? You know, how, how does this all play out? What are the factors that lead to what that number is, that, that monthly HOA fee? One, to evaluate its potential fiscal stability over the long term, but also to say, you know, whether or not these are, are accurate numbers. Because we wouldn't want to be in a situation where they, they weigh under, they lowball the numbers, and then two years in, they're going to have to drastically increase them. Obviously, we want to avoid that scenario. So we're hoping that, yeah, there is going to be a bit more of an oversight rule on the city's part to make sure that these numbers are tight.
Maggie, go ahead.
I'm just piggybacking on that, and then as far as like the utility costs, who would be estimating that portion?
Yeah, so actually, the, you also note in the standards that there's a lot of references to the New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority. And they publish numbers relative to, to all sorts of things, utilities being one of them. And they, they will, I'm, I'm actually looking at some of their tables right now, where they have different housing types and different zones within the state relative to heating degree days. So they get a real, pretty dialed-in sense of what energy expectations are for where you are, what sort of house you're in, and then can then forecast based off of, of, you know, historical price cycles for, for energy fuel, be it natural gas, heating, wood, whatever it is, and be able to associate reasonable prices or expectations on a monthly basis for that type of home, for its location. And we would rely on, on that. No need to reinvent the wheel.
No, I mean, I think that's a great source. And then my last question, actually, just as far as the five percent down goes, are there any programs affiliated with the affordable housing for people to get a down, to get a down payment?
Yes. Yes. So also through New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority, they have down payment assistance programs. There's also FHA loans. There are various programs through which people would be able to secure the five percent, even I've seen three point five percent down payments as well.
Perfect. Thank you.
Larry, sure.
Yeah, I, I missed your presentation, obviously. I was at the last meeting. Is there anything I can read? Because I don't understand this at all. I'm a real estate guy, and I kind of understand equity and things like that. No. And you got a third grade. Is there anything, you know, I don't want to take time here asking all these stupid questions that you've probably already dealt with.
Yeah, so the, the standards themselves, if you don't have a copy of those, I'd be happy to email you a PDF. And so that's, that's, I think, reading through the standards with, with this document, walking through the formula. But then I could also provide some links, if you really want to get into the weeds, to some of the New Hampshire housing resources.
I just wanted just an overview.
Certainly. I'll, I'll send you the standards, and if you have any specific questions, I'd be happy to speak to you.
Okay, good. Because one of the concerns I have is on the resale of the property. What, what, what do they actually, do these people actually own? I mean, if you're controlling the resale values based on income, couldn't they look for a higher income per, you know, person who would allow a higher sales price? I mean, it, the whole thing doesn't seem like a real market to me, so I'm trying to figure out what you're, what you're going for here.
You're, you're getting to the heart of, of my personal concern with affordable ownership housing, because these people, they get the opportunity to buy at a controlled level.
Right.
But they don't get to ride the rising tide of the real estate market, which is really unfortunate. They ride the tide of rising AMI. And then interest rates can go either way in their favor. So what it serves, they, they, they own their equity that they put into the home, but they're capped at what the, the building will appreciate by. And that cap is relative, again, to AMI and those other factors, and the ability of a person, of another buyer to buy their buying capacity. So rather than, you know, paying rent, where they're not retaining any of, of that value, they are building equity, but an affordable unit under this, because that, that unit will remain affordable for the next people as well.
Right.
It's, it's not the, the investment vehicle that you would typically see a single-family home acting as, which is not great. But then you look at, you know, what are we trying to accomplish here? Are we establishing affordable units in an ownership style one time for one family to then get that subsidized unit and then swing with the value? Or do we allow them to build equity in a home for however many years? And then they do have to sell at that cap, but then someone else can come in and, and do the same thing. And that deed restricted, that deed-protected affordable housing can then help multiple families over time in the same building by retaining some of their equity in that, that value. But again, they don't get to ride the same-
So they're basically taking advantage of the amort, loan amortization, it sounds like.
In a sense, yeah.
A thirty-year loan is pretty minimal, you have to say ten years, for example.
Although, I mean, I would argue, I mean, they're getting, you know, I grant this is just a hypothetical example, but if you take a four hundred thousand dollar value, like market value, I know that's the, I guess it's assessment, not technically market value, but, and they're getting it for two hundred and fourteen thousand. So, yeah, they're, they're, they're not getting the, the benefit of all the appreciation on the back end, but they're paying very substantially less.
I understand that. As a matter of equity, I, I totally agree with you on that. It just seems like a very convoluted program and a question in my mind, not understanding it, what, what the end value is of all the you're almost better off taking a hundred dollars out of the rent every month and sticking it in an account someplace, that we're tenants, and just giving them money, that equity.
Yeah, well, I mean, if, if, assume that what they're paying in rent would be the same as this mortgage payment, inclusive of all taxes and fees, or, or even if that's a little bit higher, you know, the, the rent is still going in as, as equity. Maybe not a hundred percent of it, you know, that same payment, because, you know, interest, taxes, all those other things. But that is a better vehicle in terms of saving through housing, in a way. Again, that equity, the development of equity, I think is, is more robust, rather than paying rent and also trying to save at the same time.
How, how would a lender deal with this, though? I mean, for example, they have the security of the asset, so they could foreclose.
Yes. So you, we-
Sorry, you're going to have to guarantee that or something?
So we actually, we have right of first refusal. So if there is a, a default, we have the ability, as a city, we have right of first refusal on that asset, and we can buy the home, rather than the bank taking it back. Because then the bank would still be saddled by the deed restriction. And then we actually now have an asset that we can manage the marketing. We probably, you know, as, as Ms. Harper said, we might actually have a waiting list of people, and then we can be, you know, the facilitator of putting someone else into that home, you know, outside of the lending process. And while we have all of these standards, we know exactly how to run these income checks and things like that, so, so we would have a role there. But the whole goal would be, we, we don't want defaults, and that's why we're trying to establish these, you know, income-based affordability standards. So there aren't, you know, house burden.
Yeah. People lose jobs, people get sick.
It's very true.
Unfortunately.
Yeah. We, the, the safety net can only be so strong.
Thank you.
I have a question. The sense of loan value can't exceed ninety-five percent of the maximum allowable. I know we were talking about three and a half percent. Down payment assistance?
Ah.
So I think that's on page seven. So I didn't know if that was something that you guys wanted to take a look at.
That is a good point.
I don't know if there's a particular reason behind that.
You said it was page seven of the standards?
Uh, page seven of the PDF, which is, it's right before the ordinance.
Yep. No, thank you, thank you.
And then, I'll let you give you a second. I have another question in a moment.
Ah, you're right. So, so five percent is the minimum, right? So, so we may want to look at that to see, compare it with some of the FHA products and other programs that New Hampshire Housing is running, if they have a lower one. We should probably set that as the floor.
Yeah, because I think the New Hampshire Housing is three and a half percent, if I remember correctly. And another question, is the, the loan rate fixed at thirty years? Because I don't, if it's not, I, I see in the formula it's fixed, but in the actual document, I don't know if I saw anything particular to that, and that just might change the minimum house sale price.
You make a good point. And while I, I agree that I don't believe that the thirty-year mortgage is the required tool, it kind of indirectly is, because the interest rate is based off of, like, what the interest rate that we have to use for our calculations, it's based off of the thirty-year, the average, the ten-year average of the thirty-year fixed-rate mortgage rate. So I don't think that you could achieve parity with a fifteen-year instrument and then yet utilize the ten-year, thirty-year average. So while we don't explicitly state that the thirty-year instrument has to be utilized, I think there would be a problem with, that the standards dictate utilization of that thirty-year tied rate. And I don't think that would work with a fifteen-year instrument.
That'd be dependent on the lender, if they're willing to take that risk on a less risky asset. Uncommon fringe scenario.
And I, and I also don't think that someone with an eighty percent AMI would be utilizing a fifteen-year instrument. I, I think that, that would then
Be unlikely.
drastically decrease, or rather depress, the, the maximum allowable purchase price. But again, tied to that interest rate, which then our standards dictate, so.
It's an unlikely fringe, but-
Yeah. But nice, nice attempt to break it. I appreciate it.
Of course.
Go ahead, Maggie.
Um, I know, I have so many questions about this. So it's fifteen years down the road, AMI increases significantly. The original buyer sells it, and the amount that the new buyer pays is more money. Do they benefit from that?
Yes.
They do?
They would.
AMI decreases, say, a recession in the area after the person purchases it, and the maximum sale price goes down. And there's a point, say, they're, they paid everything per that building. Has that become an issue with?
People get underwater on the- People get underwater on their mortgages in downturns. Not all that different, however, they have a deed restricted cap. So it is a little bit different, but if something like that was to occur, I mean, it's, it's probably more of a broad-based market effect rather than strictly being isolated to, you know, AMI. If AMIs are going down, there's, there's a broader problem in the market that's probably also depressing real estate values.
Where do the, where do the AMI figures come from? I'm just looking at the
Those.
The charts at the end.
Those come from New Hampshire Housing, or actually, sorry, HUD. HUD produces those.
Right.
New Hampshire Housing also has another table.
Because what I'm wondering is, I mean, the actual real world AMI could go down, right? But I don't know, is it possible for those HUD numbers to go down?
And I will say that those, those AMI numbers are specific to the Nashua region. So they're Nashua specific. So sorry, but.
So I'm just wondering, I mean, you, you know, do, do those HUD numbers actually go down? Or do they, is it, you know, I don't know what the, like the regulatory standard is, is there like a, a factor by which it just increased, you know, a cost of living increased every year where it just assumes, you know, a gradual increase in earnings?
Yeah, I mean, they publish them every year, so we would use them, you know, whatever's been published for that year as the guidance for, you know, any transactions that occur in that year. But you ask a good question, you know, I haven't looked back historically to see if those AMI numbers have, you know, gone up and down or if they have steadily, slowly, but steadily increased over time.
Yeah, I mean, just thinking about like other similar federal regulatory standards and they, you know, they typically only go up. You know, because there's some sort of, like I said, cost of living
Right.
factor by which they increase. Because that would kind of address the issue. You wouldn't have, there wouldn't be a circumstance then where you could, where some would be stuck in a house where now the AMI values have gone down.
Other questions for Sam?
And the, the deed, we talked about it as a 99-year, I think, the first time this was brought up. And that was limitations of just case law, I think, or, because it can't be.
It can't be forever. You gotta put a number on it.
Yes. And there's just historical precedent behind 99 years.
It's, it's what we're using for the rest, sorry, the, the rest of our inclusionary stuff. I believe it's actually in the ordinance itself.
Yeah.
Not specific to these standards.
I think there's like a historical common law origin of
I think that's
You know, which is maybe less relevant in modern times, but that's like, if you go back to English common law, it was like 99 years was essentially deemed to be forever.
Well, we got Hong Kong, don't we? So.
All right, yeah. Thank you.
Other questions for Sam? Sam, thank you for your responses. And obviously, you're, you're gonna chat separately with Larry and get him, okay?
Happy to. I'll send you those now.
Yeah, that's great.
I assume there's no one on Zoom?
I don't believe so. Just us.
All right. It was the last official item on the agenda, but Sam, would you like to take a quick opportunity or a long opportunity? You have some new staff?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, my pleasure. So Connor Muse is our new deputy planning manager. Ta-da.
Welcome.
Connor, do you want, feel free to embarrass yourself for a minute or two, to tell, tell us, tell the rest of the board where you're from, how you got here.
Absolutely.
Or say less or more. It's, it's completely up to you.
No, thank you, Sam, for the introduction. Yeah, my name is Connor. I am the new deputy planning manager. I'll, I'll be involved in a lot of the planning board agendas and meetings. Just, just happy to be here. I am Nashua native, and so I've been away for some time, but it's good to be back home. And I'm just happy to be involved with city development and look forward to working with you all. So, thank you again.
Thank you. Welcome aboard. All right, well, we did pretty well tonight. Covered a lot of ground. It's only 8:15, but I think I'd be looking for a motion to adjourn.
Um, one moment.
Oh, no, Sam.
Sam!
Maggie's hand was halfway up.
So we had all this great discussion about the standards. How do you feel about adopting them?
Well.
We can wait, we can table, but.
I, I, I think in fairness, I think, I think it would be appropriate to have tonight's discussion soak in a little bit. We have at least one board member just gonna read through a little bit more.
Certainly.
I, I, I'd rather, I'd rather make an informed, slower decision, honestly, than rush right into something, so.
In the meantime, I will work the document to integrate the formula in some way. And if anyone has any other brainwaves about information that should be included in the standards, please feel free to let me know.
Yeah, and, and obviously, at this point, if you don't already know, Sam and staff reply, I don't wanna say instantaneously, but they're very responsive. So if you do think anything else outside of this forum that you wanted to ask about, you know, please, please direct anything towards, towards Sam and I'm sure he'll, he'll get back to you pretty, pretty quickly, so. Yeah, go.
Were you planning to try and implement what, or a version of what Maggie had asked a question on with a, some sort of waiting list and or, okay, just one.
That's probably gonna be like a web-based application. I won't have that for you by next meeting.
Again, more of a question if it's, you know, something that, it seemed something somewhat valuable or?
I completely agree. And I think it is something that we need to talk about developing. And I think that as conversations continue with the developer of this development in question, and when he starts speaking with eligible buyers, I think that conversation is naturally going to occur and kind of push this idea of some sort of a waiting list that the city maintains into the, to the front. So we'll, we'll get there.
We'll get there, I know. Long, long process.
And Sam, just a quick follow-up. Given the fact, I guess to use your term, there's, there's a guinea pig project going on right now, i- is there, is there a clock running? Like how close would this be to being applicable? Is it a month? Is it two weeks? Is it six months?
I think we have time to, not a lot, you know, as, as we get closer to the spring, you know, one, it's best time to be buying and selling homes, I suppose, at spring market. But also, I, I do know that they have foundations in and they are framing. It is 80 some odd homes and, but I do believe they are getting into the affordables now. But what I can do, I am not getting the sense that there are significant changes to this document that we foresee. So we can provide it to the developer as guidance with the indication that this may be very close to its final form. And hopefully that will give him a level of comfort to be able to continue construction and not feel like he needs to wait and see if, you know, how the board changes these standards, if they do at all.
All right. Thank you. One more time? Maggie, go for it.
Mr. Chair? I'd like to make a, a motion to adjourn.
Alrighty. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we are adjourned at 8:20.